Welcome. I am Andrea Hobbly, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of the Woodbury Cottage Grove area. The purpose of the League, national, state, and local, is to empower voters and defend democracy. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a trusted source of nonpartisan voter registration and education, and a longstanding witness to Minnesota's proud tradition of voter access and election integrity. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government to work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League strengthens our communities by promoting voter registration, conducting candidate forums, and informing voters on public policy through education. We also invite you to visit our website, lvwmn.org, to learn about the statute's best practices and safeguards associated with Minnesota elections on our Elections 411 page. Follow the link to Vote 411 for a one-stop shop for all your election needs personalized to you, including a voter's guide. We hope all of our candidates here tonight have submitted their information to the voter's guide. And now I'll turn it over to Jody Ratacca, who is moderating today.
Thank you, Andrea. And thank you for joining us this evening. Tonight's candidate forum is for Newport City Council. And all four candidates have been invited to participate in tonight's forum. And if they were not participating, they either declined or decided not to participate. Our candidates joining us are Tom Inghamman, Bill Sumner, and Tony Mahmood, and salary Zachary Murphy is the other candidate. Each candidate will have one minute for opening statements, and we will rotate the order in which the candidates answer the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer and 30 seconds for any rebuttal. Questions have been submitted by voters to the League's email, and questions or questions were submitted during the voter service events in the community. At the finish of the questions, each candidate will have one minute for closing statements, and we will reverse the order of the opening statements. The forum is being livestreamed and broadcast on South Washington County SWCTC cable TV. Viewing audiences can submit questions by calling or texting the number displayed on the screen during the forum. And the forum is being recorded and can be viewed until Election Day on SWCTC website or on Woodbury Cottage Grove area League of Women Voters website. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce our League of Women Voters volunteers, who will be our timekeepers tonight. And they are Tamara, Ms. Dan, and Andrea Hebbily. So, thank you for your time. And they will hold up signs to indicate 30 seconds and 15 seconds remaining or a sign, a stop sign when your time has expired. So now let's begin with our opening statements. As I mentioned, our candidates, Tom Inghamman, Bill Sumner, and Tony Mahmood. And we'll begin with candidate Tom Inghamman.
Good evening. My name is Tom Inghamman. And I'm presently on the Newport City Council. I'm running for reelection. I've been a resident of Newport since 1973. And I've been on the Newport Fire Department for 42 years, retiring as an Assistant Chief in Charge of Training. Presently, in my part-time, I am an examiner for the Minnesota Fire Service Certification Board. It's very important to get volunteers and people that are concerned with their neighbors and their neighborhood. I can't stress how important it is just to make sure that you're out there when somebody needs you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Tony Mahmood.
Hi, my name is Tony Mahmood, and I'd like to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for everything that you do. I have been a resident of Newport for over 20 years now, along with my lovely wife Donna. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2013. My wife and I also volunteer as election judges. So this year, we won't be able to do election judging because I'm running, so there's two spots open. So if you want to get involved in the city, which it's very important that you do because we need people to be a part of the city, give Travis a call at City Hall and let him know that you want to fill in for Tony and Donna. I'd also just like to let everybody know that one of the reasons why I'm running is because the way our country is right now and how much of a mess it is. And the best way to fix things is to start at local government. It's very important that our community gets involved with everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Bill Sumner.
Hi, Newport neighbors. I'm Bill Sumner. I'm asking for your support so I can continue serving you. I've delivered financial, smart financial oversight. I've supported strong law enforcement and fire protection during my 12 years on council. We've earned our best financial rating ever. I've served on the Washington and Ramsey County Task Force that would reduce the odors coming out of the waste treatment, the waste separating plant here in Newport. I've represented Newport in the federal court seeking the end of the rendering odors. I've got a business degree from the University of Minnesota in Business Administration. I've got two daughters and two granddaughters. I retired with 30 years of service with the state, half at the university and half with civil law enforcement. I'm currently the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I actively make Newport look good by trimming the trees. I will continue strong financing, public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time to begin our questions. The first question on priorities, the city council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What two priorities, strategy initiatives would you push for? Begin with Tony.
Fiscal responsibility is top of the list. I would also push that we make sure we have our city sewers up and running properly. We're having a little bit of trouble with those right now. So those are the two things that I would like to see done.
All right. Tom?
I, I work for, what I, what I work on right now is providing the best public service at the lowest reasonable cost available. And right now, finding people to work in public works is very difficult. During the summer, normally they hire young people to cut the grass and work in the, in the parks. And this year, no one applied. So we need, we need good public service that the people require at a reasonable cost. And that's what I strive to accomplish. Thank you.
So I understand we're looking for two financial focuses. Is that correct? Was that my understanding of the question?
The question are the, what two priority strategic initiatives would you push for?
Strategic initiatives. Oh, strategic initiatives, certainly keeping Newport a well-managed city. That involves the financial oversight. That involves continuing our strong support for the law enforcement and certainly the firefighters. Without firefighting protection, people are not going to be able to get insurance for their homes. The firefighters are a paid-on call. And currently, we are fortunate to have a very active, fairly strong, very strong supporting group. However, recruiting new members is essential. By building this new fire hall, we hope to be able to show them that the city stands strong behind them and it's committed to safety. So that these guys that come in and risk their lives out there on fire calls can get the best possible safety applied to the conditions that they work in. So strategically, I want to make sure that the city is strong, that the finances are strong, and that we build strong community, a strong feeling of community.
Thank you. Next question on budgets and finance. Raising taxes is a perennial issue. With the increase in home values, property taxes will be much higher. What alternatives to generating revenue would you explore? Bill?
Well, we're very fortunate to have, during the 12 years that I was on, we finally landed the billboard, which brings in $180,000 a year of revenues for the city. We also worked very hard to get the Bailey Meadows Housing Development, which is over 186, which is 186 new homes of very substantial value. There was also a large number of infill homes brought into Newport. So all of these sources of additional revenue will help us increase the revenue sources to hopefully offset the increase of taxes that the counties are going to be putting on us. And as a financial, somebody with financial background, I will look very closely at the costs that Newport is incurring at the, at the, at the city level to make sure that we're wisely spending our money.
Thank you. Tony?
Well, one of the things that we can do to help offset taxes instead of raising them is we can get more businesses. As a business owner, for the last 24 years, I know a little bit about business. I know how things work and how cities treat businesses. I came from St. Paul with my business. And I'm pleased to work with Newport on the Planning Commission. And it's great to see that Newport and its commissioners and its, its council is very good to business. So I'd really like to help Newport get more businesses. We have a lot of area where we can expand and bring in new business. So that's one of my, my top priorities is the business end of the deal.
Thank you. Tom?
Business advancement is extremely important. And we have started some budget processes now. And we have seen where, after we got some information from the county, no matter what we do, if we held taxes at a zero interest, they're still going to go up. And there's not a whole lot we can do about that because property values have just absolutely gone skyrocketing. And the people want good service, and you have to provide good service. And like I say, you have to do that at a reasonable cost. And we're trying to maintain the cost as reasonable as possible. You can't, you can't run a business, have them come in and not provide service for them at all. So we try to do what we can.
Thank you. Another question on the same lines. What specific steps would you take to balance the budget? Tom?
We've been working on the budget, and it's, it's a complicated issue right now. And there's not a single thing that one person could do. You could complain about cut this, cut that, cut this, cut that. What you're doing is you're, you're cutting basic services. And people want basic services provided by the city, no matter what. So Newport has a small population, so we have to spread the cost out amongst the smaller population. A Woodbury has thousands of people, they can spread the cost out. Cottage Grove has thousands of people to spread the cost out. Newport doesn't. So people complain that the taxes in Newport are high. I agree. But we're getting the best service at the lowest possible cost.
Thank you. Tony?
Well, I'll stress again, one of the things that we need to do to keep our taxes down and keep it reasonable so people want to live here is to bring in business. If you have business, businesses are taxed at a higher rate. They bring in more money. They bring in people. They help other businesses. The more people that come to this business, they see this business, and it just keeps rolling. And you want those businesses to succeed. And like Tom said, you need to provide services. Well, it's hard to provide services if you don't have the businesses to pay for them. So we really have to focus on bringing in new businesses and helping our existing businesses grow. So it's very, very important. That's one of the things that I definitely will be looking at.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, Newport has brought in some businesses lately. There's not a lot of open space to bring businesses in. That's one of the biggest challenges that we have on the south end of town. We brought in the three large warehousing units. We brought in lately, three or four new businesses have come into Newport. The available space, which is a major constraint for the business development, is going to impact us. Therefore, we have to go back and look at the budget itself. And yes, we have certain things that are required of a city. We have certain options that we, that we hope to provide. And maybe some of the things that we had on a wish list have to be looked at a second time. And I hate to give up, give up things that Newport residents want. But there's a lot of people in this town that are on very strict, limited finances. And we have to honor their current situations also by balancing the budget and reducing expenses wherever possible. And I'll look there very closely at the possibility of reducing some overhead items.
Thank you. Next, addressing housing. What is your position on affordable housing in Newport? How do you define affordable? Bill?
Well, Newport has a large number of homes in the city that are already classified as affordable housing. We have a recently opened multi-unit development on the north end of town. We were told by the county that they were going to be able to fill that with a large number of people that they had designated as needing supported services. And those, those homes would have been supplemented, those home prices would have been supplemented by the county. However, the county is kind of reneged on that, and we are now looking at ways to bring in more homes. The transit site was recently almost decommissioned. And I think that's an opportunity to look at housing. But we want to make sure that the people that come in are responsible residents in Newport. We have a workforce housing unit of 42 units that has very, been very successful. I don't think we've had many criminal or police calls there. And the people were in line to move into that unit. So that's the kind of housing that I think we can bring into Newport.
Thank you. Tom?
We have quite a bit of the apartments, their workforce apartments. When they were built, they were filled up immediately. Their, their market-rate apartments. We don't have a whole lot of land to designate. The wings over on the other, on the east side of the highway was supposed to have been the elderly, handicapped, and that guy got all tossed out. But we're, we, we're trying to see if we can get some more apartments over at the transit site along with some businesses over there. Both are needed.
Thank you. Tony?
So could you repeat that for me?
Yeah, the question is, what is your position on affordable housing in Newport? And how do you define affordable?
Okay. Everybody's definition of affordable is different. But Newport has some of the best quality homes at prices that are unbelievable. If you go up anywhere around here, the, the prices of homes are ridiculous compared to what they are here. And we do have a lot of apartments that are workforce. We have our fair share of affordable housing. We need to build over on the transit site. And we need to build multiple housing so that the businesses that we're going to bring in have people that are going to go to them. So it's very important that we take a look. And a lot of Newport people don't want to have any more affordable housing. But we need to have more people so that we can bring in businesses so that we can keep our taxes low.
Thank you. What, another question, the same lines. What role does the city play in addressing unresponsive landlords and rising rents? That goes to Tony.
Well, the city has things in place before the housing is built. And you put conditions on there. You have conditional use permits. You have, you have all kinds of tools that you can use beforehand. Once it's built and the owners, if they're not quality owners, it takes a long time for the city to actually be able to do something. It's not as easy as people think. You can't just go in there and tell somebody what to do and kick them out of their, you know, tell them that you're taking their apartments away from them. You can't do that. So it's very difficult. It's not easy to, to rein these slum lords, if you would, if you use, want to use that word. It's, it's hard to get rid of them. But the city has tools in place to do it, and you just have to follow the laws that you have in place.
Thank you. Tom?
The question about rent, we don't have any control over what they charge. The city is not St. Paul. We don't have rent control. A slum landlord, we have stuff that we can do to take care of and fix things up. But other than that, you got to go with what laws are on the books and the ordinances that are on the books. And, you know, it takes a while to get stuff done. Things don't happen overnight in any city.
Thank you. And Bill?
This is a question with a pretty, pretty quick answers. The Newport has some fairly strict standards for rental units. Those are already in existence. And rent control is proven not to work, so that I, there's nothing that Newport can do on rent control successfully. Those are my two answers, and short and sweet on that.
Thank you. Next question. There are teens experiencing homelessness in our community. How and what can the city do to help these teens? Tom?
Right now, we don't have anything. It would be nice if somewhere along the line, a teen center was built. But, you know, would they be for Newport? Or would they all go down to Cottage Grove? Or would they go to St. Paul Park? I don't believe we have a lot of homeless teens in this particular neighborhood at this time.
All right. Bill?
Well, I've been involved with an unit, with an organization called Basic Needs. It was formerly the Stone Soup Thrift Shop. But Basic Needs has got dedicated resources looking at the homeless, homeless issues. We have worked closely with some of the local churches. When we identify teens, we found some places we can give them at least an opportunity to get cleaned up, set them up with some basic life-supporting equipment, and often help them find some type of housing. Quite often, unfortunately, these kids are on the street by their own choice. And/or they're out there, they've been tossed out of their own home because of just noncompliance with the basic rules of home. So we, we can support them to the extent that we're able to. But taking in somebody, taking in teenagers is often a very challenging, is a challenge fraught with legal complications. But Stone Soup Basic Needs has done a lot to help support these base, these kids. And I've been involved with Basic Needs for 20 years.
Thank you. Tony?
Well, this is an issue that unfortunately is going to continue to grow. And I don't think government is the answer. Everybody always turns to government. Government's not here to take care of us. We need to help take care of each other. So you need to talk to churches, you need to talk to private organizations, 501(c)(3) organizations. If somebody on the city happens to be able to know some of those people and can help organize that and have the support of the city, that would be wonderful. But I, I personally do not feel it is the government's place to get involved in situations like this. I think we need to start going back to our churches and just our, our people. You have to be a good person, and you have to be willing to stand up and help out. That's, that's about all you can do.
Thank you. Moving on to public safety and the community. What are your proposals, if any, to decrease crime and promote public safety in our neighborhoods? Tony?
Well, we have the Washington County Sheriff's Department as our police force now. They've been doing a wonderful job. This, you know, other than, other than hiring more police officers, I'm not sure exactly what I would be able to do. You know, we could start a community watch program to help out, you know, things like that. There again, that's back down to your churches and your, your, your community. They have to get involved in order to keep things safe. We all have to stand up. We all have to be part of this. We are all Newport citizens, and we have to work together to make the city stronger, better, and safer.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, I was very pleased to have strongly supported the merger with Washington County Sheriff's Office. And I think that they have been able to bring in the amount of law enforcement coverage that they see necessary. They've got power shifts, which is almost, which is a double coverage at times that they identify as, as problem times. On the council, I remember we used to get reports on crime. I'm not privy to that. Councilmember Inghamman would be seeing these reports if they're still issued. But I don't hear that the, the, the crime is, is out of control, although stuff happens. One of my neighbors had a catalytic converter taken off their car. Things like that continue to happen. And to, to deal with that, it's eyes, if you see something, say something. I talked to the sheriff and he, to the deputy, to the sergeant, and he says, "Call us. If you got a question, we'd rather show up, investigate something, and have it be of no consequence."
Thank you. Tom?
Again, like Bill said, see something, say something. The Sheriff's Department is, is doing an excellent job taking care of the citizens of this city. If they need additional forces, they're here. I would say the, the service that we're getting from the county is excellent right now. And the, the amount of calls that I see within a month is not that large. In other words, this is a pretty darn safe community. words, this is a pretty darn safe community. Okay? And they're doing an excellent job. Again, you see something, say something.
Thank you. What programs and/or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth in the city? Bill?
Well, the city recently did a survey, and they looked at what the equipment in the parks was looking like. And they have made a major commitment to spend a lot of money to improve parks in Newport. They're also going to be looking at the park on this location when the, when the fire hall at the, at the end of this block is taken down. And there are some plans to put additional, I believe, ice rinks in town. They're going to redo the ice rink up in, in, in Loveland, I, I'm understanding. And those, those are things that, that in the wintertime gives the kids something to do. In the summer, if we get more playground equipment, that is, that is an excellent place for kids to play. And just having kids able to go out on the streets, because it's a safe city, and play in their neighborhoods is also a very important part of a childhood. I spent a lot of time playing kickball in the streets.
Thank you. Tom?
The, Bill is right. The city has put a lot of money into the new playground equipment at Pioneer Park. It's ADA compliant. It should be open hopefully by the end of this week. At least, that's what they're targeting. They're looking at opening up some dog parks for your dogs. And something that's been kind of kicked around, but nothing has really moved forward is, is possibility of, of maybe a splash pad somewhere. These are things that, that, all the information came in from surveys that, that the city council put out and said, "What would you like to see?" And we're trying to give the people what they'd like to see at a reasonable cost and present it to them, not all at once, but over a period of time. It's going to take a while.
Thank you. And Tony?
Well, here again, we're talking about the city providing something for the citizens at a cost. We're, we're trying to keep our budget balanced. We're trying not to raise taxes. We have the parks, and it's great that we're keeping up on the parks. But if we want to provide more things for our youth, then we need volunteers from the city. We need people to step up. We need, if we want to do like a baseball program, we need coaches to step up. We need equipment managers to step up. We need people to do fundraisers, to raise money to buy the equipment, so the city doesn't have to spend all that money. Not everybody has a kid, so not everybody wants to see their taxes go up to, to, to spend money on youth programs. I think it's important that we spend money on youth programs, but I don't think the city has to flip the bill for everything. I think there's ways that we can get it done with volunteerism throughout our community.
Moving on to infrastructure and water. How would you work with state representatives to fix the aging infrastructure to reduce stormwater infiltration into our sewer lines? Tom?
We have been working extremely close with our state representatives, and we've gotten multiple grants to assist in fixing the inflow problem. Right now, we're working on, I think it's a $10 million grant that we got. We're asking for more to fix the problems, because every amount of clean water that goes to the, you know, MPC, we get charged for. And what you want is just the dirty water, the stuff that has got, you know, your, your flushings, not the clean water. And when you get water coming in from, because of trees and everything else, or high river water, that just costs the city a lot of money that the FEC charges.
Thank you.
So we're working on it.
Bill?
Well, the sanitary sewer leaks that allow the infiltration and inflow is what causes the surge in water that goes to the, to the treatment plants. And I began working on this, one of the first things that, that I undertook 12 years ago. And we had some projects, and we tried a few things, and we found out that the, what was recommended by the engineers, and we followed their advice, and they didn't work. So now we had to go back and do some examination. We set up a, a test area on the south end of town, the southeast end of town, and we looked at some alternatives to lining this, the sanitary sewer lines. We've got a major project, as council member mentioned, and we need to receive vast amounts of money in order to undertake this monstrous project. And because we're a small city, we need to convince the Met Council that the biggest dollar impact can be achieved right here because of the high amount of infiltration that we have, so that it's a request for money.
Thank you. Tony?
It's a huge problem. We're, we're under the thumb of the Metropolitan Council, and they have major fines that they're going to put on Newport if we don't get this problem fixed. The, the council has been doing their best to, to fix it. It's really expensive. And I'm so glad to hear that you've gotten grants. It's very important that we, we look at all the opportunities that are out there to get these grants, because unfortunately, we don't have the money to fix this problem unless we put it all upon the homeowner. So we have to come up with some solutions and, and, and take a look at it closer. I haven't been a part of those discussions. Being on the planning commission, we don't talk about the sewer problem very much, but I, I can't wait to get in there and see what's going on and see if there's anything I can do to help.
All right. Next question. What would you do to bring new small businesses to the city and help business, businesses start? What specific plans do you have to retain existing businesses? Tom?
To bring businesses in, you need the people that, that are here. And if we get some more apartment buildings, that would bring in more people, which would require services, which would bring in businesses. We're, we're 30 minutes from Minneapolis. We're 20 minutes from St. Paul. We're 30 minutes from the airport and, and the Mall of America. We're at the crossroads of Highway 61 and 494. This is an ideal location for working, working people to live in our apartments requiring food and groceries and coffee shops and drugstores, et cetera. We need, you need the people that require the businesses. Otherwise, the businesses will not come.
Bill?
Small businesses facing a lot of challenges right now with the advent of so much purchasing that's now available online. The requests, the requirement for small gift shops and that, those types of small retailers, I think unfortunately is going to be a thing that we're not going to see very much more. We have a couple of service businesses that just opened in Newport. We need to work extremely closely to be accommodating to them. I know that the, there was recently a request by one of our businesses to get some leeway on the sign ordinance, and I don't know that they got as much support as I would have often, as I would have offered to them. The, the pursuit for, for employers, for employees is tremendous. Anything that Newport can do to support the businesses, when they come to us with a request, we need to take that into consideration and work very closely with them based on their requests.
Tony?
Okay. Most important thing you gotta do is we gotta get the people in here. We have to build higher-density housing, so we have people so that they will go to the businesses. We need to offer businesses grants or incentives to come here. We can get those through the state. We can get those through federal government. There's programs out there to help businesses get started. The businesses that are already here, there's programs out there that we can go to to get grants, so they can redo the outside of their buildings. I would love to see a little bit of commonality between our buildings instead of a mishmash posh of buildings that were built in the 50s and some that were in the 80s. And they're all different, and it, it just looks weird. So there's money out there that we can get for these businesses that are here already, that we can help them to try to have a more communal look about us. I think that's important.
Thank you. Next question. What do you think is the biggest problem or challenge, challenge facing Newport? And we've been with Bill.
Well, Newport is a pretty terrific little town, and as a, as a town of this size with its small-town charm, of course, it has the limits, as we have discussed multiple times this evening, of income sources. So we, we need to bring in outside businesses. And a member of the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, we are intent on going down and looking at some of the other small towns that have relied on their historic attributes and use those as, as keys to make a, a tourist destination. Lanesboro and some of these other, I'm, I'm hoping the HPC can go down to Waseoza, which is a, a small town down by Rochester, and look at how they bring in local businesses and, excuse me, business people to their tourist type of, of a setup, so that I'm hoping that we can bring people into Newport based on some of the historic attributes that we've got here. Something I'm working on currently and will continue to work on.
Tony?
You're gonna have to repeat that question.
Question. What do you think is the biggest problem or challenge facing Newport?
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. So right now, one of the biggest and most expensive challenges that Newport is facing is our sewer system. It's gonna cost a lot of money to fix it, and we gotta get it fixed, because if we don't, they're gonna fine us. So that's one of the biggest problems that we have facing us economically. Socially, we need to get our community together more. We need to do more things to, that, that don't cost money. Things like having barbecues in the park, having community events where people can come together and bring potlucks, have cook-offs, chili feeds, things to bring our community together. And we need to work with our churches in town to be able to do that. We have to bring our community together. We have to have more involvement from the community, and that will in and of itself make this community better.
Thank you. And Tom?
Well, like they've all been saying, we need more business, and we need to, we've been cleaning up the appearance of Newport lately. And a while ago, you would be embarrassed to bring somebody to the old city hall. We now have a very nice structure, and we're cleaning up the city and inviting businesses to come in and take a look. And once they see that, hey, this is a thriving community, they'll, they'll, they'll open up a business here. And along with the business, you need a little more population. You know, another set of apartment buildings with 42 units would be great. We need, we need a lot of things, but, you know, this is a small community, and, and people care about what goes on and the way it looks. And we need and, and have worked toward cleaning up this area and this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final question here. What neighborhood issues are most important to you, and how would you resolve them? Tony?
You know, every year since I've been here, which is a little over 20 years now, we've done National Night Out. And it started out where it was just me and a couple of the neighbors. And now we put on an event where anybody from Newport's welcome to come. We have the fire department come, the police department comes, our city workers and staff come, people from all around the, the community come to this event. Those are the type of things that we need to do more. Doesn't just need to be on National Night Out. We can set up things where we can have more community involvement and get to know your neighbor. Go next door to your neighbor. Bring them some cookies. Say hi. Get to know people that are in your community. They'll watch over your house if you're not there. They'll keep your dog safe if they see it get out. Just, let's get together more.
All right. And Tom?
And the question was again?
The question is, what neighborhood issues are most important to you, and how would you resolve them?
Oh, like, like, like Tony said, I'm sorry, you've got to, you've got to get to know your neighbors. And, you know, a while ago, before construction started, we used to have a booyah that everybody came to, and it was overcrowded, and it was great. It was a great experience. We've got Pioneer Days. But it would not hurt to have more of these local activities, either sponsored by the city or the fire department or National Night Out. You need to get to know, to know your neighbors and, and what do they think and how they think. And, you know, like Tony said, bring over a box of cookies. I'm waiting.
It's been a really quick hour here, so that concludes our questions. Now for your one-minute closing statements. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we will reverse the order of the, from the opening statements. So we begin with candidate Bill Sumner.
Well, this has been a very interesting and enlightening time to, to, to speak to our, our neighbors here in Newport. And I will remind you that for 12 years, I've worked hard to bring in the proper law enforcement, the proper support for our fire department, the oversight on our finances. We have worked hard to make the, the city, one of the biggest problems the, the city had for a long time was the image associated with the stink coming out of the recycling center. I sat in those, those meetings with the Washington and Ramsey County Commissioners, and we've come to an agreement on reducing those odors. That's been a tremendous impact on making Newport more viable. And we still have to clean up the Sanamax odor. So these are, these are big monstrous things. If somebody's got eight-inch grass, that's not as much of an impact as the stink coming out of Sanamax. So I will continue to work, as I have, to bring Sanamax into control and also to support the ongoing social, social structure of Newport. Finances, police, and fire.
Thank you. Next closing statement from candidate Tony Mahmood.
I've been a business owner for 24 years. The business that I run is a family business. It's been around for 36 years. I know what it takes to make things happen. I want to be a part of this community. I want to be a part of the city council, so I can make things happen for you. You need to come to me. You need to talk to me. I have a garage that the door is always open. We can have a beverage. We can sit down. We can talk about the issues. You tell me what's on your mind. You tell me what you want fixed. And believe me, I will do it. I will try to get it done for you. We need to come together as a community. We need to talk more. We need to do things together more. And that's what I'm going to bring to this community. Fellowship and good, happy people. That's what I want to see. Thank you, and vote for Tony.
Thank you. And closing statement now from candidate Tom Ingleman.
Well, I'm presently on the city county, running for reelection. I have been involved in the city ever since I moved here in 1973. Originally, I wanted to be on the police reserve, and my wife says, "No, you can't do that. Join the fire department. It's safer." And I was on the fire department for 42 years, retiring as, like I said, an assistant chief in charge of training. And I am a little biased, but I think we've got the best fire department in the area, bar none. And I would put them up against any of you. I've been involved. I was on a planning commission. I was on a, a chairman of the planning commission during the Highway 61 reconstruction period. And I'm, I'm well aware of Newport's needs, and please vote November 8th for Tom Ingleman.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our candidate forum, and I want to thank our candidates for participating in this candidate forum, a very important candidate forum. So thank you so much. And thank you to our timekeepers, Tam and Andrea. And I want to thank everyone watching this broadcast on SWCTC and on, on their cable station. And we encourage everyone listening to this broadcast to exercise their right to vote and get out and vote. Now here's Andrea for some final comments.
Well, that concludes our forum for the candidates running for the Newport City Council. Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for choosing to run for office and your participation in tonight's forum. Thank you to all those who viewed the forum live tonight or who viewed the recording between now and the election. This is the last of eight candidate forums that the League of Women Voters Woodbury Cottage Grove area has hosted this September. The forums are our most important service, one of our most important services to the community. Last year, we had over 3,000 views of all of our forums. Replays of the other forums are available to watch online. Those include the forum you've watched tonight, as well as the Washington County Commissioner Districts 2, 4, and 5, State House and Senate Districts 41, 47, and 53, and Woodbury City Council. The videos are on YouTube, and you can get to those through the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission website, which is swctc.org. And again, that's swctc.org. Please make every effort to become informed about candidates running for all of the offices on this year's ballot, and most importantly, get out and vote.